Hello, everyone. Welcome to a conversation with council. I think it's called Spark, a conversation with council. My name is Councilor Heidi Lou, and with me I have.
Hi, I'm Councilor Liz Newton.
And we're really, really lucky to have with us tonight Commander Jamie McDonald with our Tiger Police Department. Jamie, would you like to introduce yourself?
Well, Jamie McDonald, I oversee our operations division currently, which is pretty much everybody in uniform. So all of the men and women you see in uniform out there. And so actually, I'm smiling under the mask.
I know.
This is unusual times with the pandemic as well. So anyway, that's what I do right now.
Yep, and we are wearing masks. And we just want to make sure that we're following the governor's orders being inside. We are trying to speak loudly. We do have a microphone right there for amplification. If we are not speaking loud enough, or you're having trouble, please let us know. Oh, and we can try to yell a bit louder so we can get it across. Tonight, we're really just here to have a conversation with our community. There's certainly a lot going on on a national level and a local level. And we want to make sure that we are communicating with you and getting out information that we have. And that you're sharing with us information that you have or things you want to talk about. We have a list of some questions tonight. We're also going to be taking live questions, so please use that chat box down below to give us a question, and we're going to go ahead and answer a nice mix of them. So there's a couple of things we wanted to really start off with to talk about. The first thing is, there's a lot of changes right now with the COVID pandemic in the governor's orders. Starting on Wednesday, a lot of the counties, I apologize, I'm talking and like trying to breathe at the same time. It's difficult. A lot of the counties are going to be required as of Wednesday, when you are indoors, to be wearing a mask. So that includes places like grocery stores. Obviously, if you are in a restaurant and you are physically eating or drinking, you're not required to have it. But I believe if you are not, and you're sitting there, you will be asked to have it on.
Right.
And the governor is going to come out with some more specific directions, I believe, in the next couple of days, as far as what that means.
And our understanding is that now Washington County, Multnomah County, and Clackamas County are going to move to Phase Two together. And it looks like July 10th is the day that that might happen, but you know, stay tuned for that. But that's the plan at this point.
Yep, and so as a tri-county area, we need to hit a lot of milestones in order to get that. We certainly, I have a list of the milestones that I'm happy to go over with it. If you're interested in, we can talk about that. And sort of some new guidance as far as what you can do in Phase Two. There were some changes with that as well. So we can talk about that. If you're interested, let us know in the chat box. A couple of other things. The Oregon Employment Department is holding a webinar this Friday around the pandemic unemployment assistance. I know that there have been a lot of issues with the unemployment assistance, and they're working through all of that. But I believe now they are trying to tackle the PUA. That's going to be this Friday, June 19th, at 1:00 PM. They will talk through the key points of the program and questions they hear the most about. So you can register in advance. Again, that's the Oregon Employment Department. So look online for that to be able to register.
Councilor Lou, it looks like we have a question.
Sure.
It says, "Talk more about what are the duties or responsibilities with the city council position? Part of the solution is knowing who has the power to enact those ideas." That's a really good question. By city charter, we have a council manager form of government. So you can think about the mayor and council as sort of the board of directors of the city. We set all the policy direction and enact through ordinances any laws that would pertain to the city. That's not a state or federal law, but anything, ordinances or laws that pertain to the city. And we do have final authority to approve the budget. One key thing about Oregon is that we have some of the strictest requirements in terms of the council conducting business in the open. We have some pretty friendly laws in terms of the public being able to watch the council conduct business. And so all of our meetings are conducted in public with the exception of a few things. And so everyone's entitled to come, and a lot of the issues that we discuss, we have public hearings or opportunities for public comment, runs the gamut from policies that we enact to contracts to a lot, a number of different things. So we are essentially, again, the board of directors for the city. I don't know if Councilor Lou wants to add anything to that.
No, I think you talked about it really well. You know, we set policy guidance, and it's the responsibility of our city manager to really get into details and the operations and enact all of those. We also do things, as a council, when we started as the five of us, there's, so there's four counselors and there's one mayor. A year and a half ago, when we started as council, we met together and we talked about goals and that setting kind of the goals that we want to achieve as a council for the next two years. So again, we're really policy, and the city manager is the one in the details. But that's a really great question. Thank you, because that's something I hear a lot is, when they find out I'm a city counselor, well, what does that mean? And in different cities, it can mean different things. But the most common form of government is the city manager council position. As you know, the city of Portland is a bit different. I think on a national level, they are the biggest city that has their form of government. And I think the only other one that is just recently they voted to change would be Beaverton, which is where the mayor is the executor of the city. But they voted by charter in May to change that, and so I think that's probably going to happen in next year.
We have a question highlighted here, and we're going to ask Commander McDonald if he could address this. It says, "Could you tell me what community policing means and what it would mean in Tiger?"
Yeah, excellent question. And really, community policing is a philosophy that's been around for decades. And we have used the buzzword of community policing for a long time here in Tiger. And really, what it means is it means taking the opportunity to connect with people in the community, to go out and solve problems with neighborhoods and community members. Find out what those issues are, talk to them, and then try and come up with a solution. It could be things as simple as parking issues in a neighborhood to as complex as a drug house in a neighborhood. Sometimes they're short-term projects, sometimes they're very long-term, very complex projects. So that's really what community policing is, and it really involves the community as a part of that process. Much like the council looks for feedback from the community when you're making decisions, when we're trying to decide what the big issues are in an area, we use data and we use community input. And that community input can be really critical, because even in the data, we can be missing things. And the community being involved in that decision-making process is a really big, a big deal. And it's important to us as an organization so that we can be engaged with the people in the community and know what it is they're looking for from their police department.
I think if I could also add, one of the things that we were focused on with the police levy that we put on the ballot in May was adding additional officers. So we have five patrol districts in Tiger. And currently, as it stands right now, we don't have enough officers to be in a patrol district at each time. And it was important for us as a council to go with, to support the community policing and to be able to dedicate these officers into these different districts and with the intent of the same officers being assigned to the same districts. To be able to get to know the community members, know what it looks like, know what's going on, and to really be able to build those relationships.
Yeah, and that time to build those relationships is really critical. And when you don't have enough people to cover all the calls for service, it doesn't give you that time to be proactive and help to identify what some of those issues are. And then we can, you know, allocate the appropriate amount of attention to whatever those issues are. So it really, that is a huge bonus to the community policing idea is by having enough people to be able to do it.
Right, and those officers become then familiar with that area, so they know what seems out of place. And they know what, they can build a history with those residents who then feel comfortable approaching them about issues that they're dealing with. So yeah, it's an important way to help people feel connected in the communities.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, does Commander McDonald report to the council or to the city manager? Actually, neither.
Neither.
Technically, Commander McDonald reports to the police chief.
Correct.
The police chief reports to the city manager, and the city manager reports to the city council. That's how that works. What is the plan to replace dash cams with body cams, and are they always required to be on? Is there any place where the public can have access to this footage to help hold the law enforcement system accountable? Well, before I let Commander McDonald respond, I know that we probably are going to be taking another look at this, but it is a budget issue, and so we'll take another look. But if you can elaborate a little more.
Sure, yeah, we've, so as a city, we've been in the dash cam world for over 15 years. And we've used body cams in limited deployment for several years now. And I'd have to look and see how many years that's been, but the, so we're, it's something that we actually, you know, when you talk to our officers, they really like them. They like dash cams, they like body cams, they would like to be having the opportunity to wear those. And you know, one of them is, one of the ideas is transparency and accountability. They see no reason why not to wear them. So, and I agree, I think that they're incredibly beneficial for the community at large as well. And then the other part of the question was, is there any place where public can have access to this footage to help hold law enforcement system accountable? So it's a little more complex to just distribute video out there. Some of it is evidentiary in nature, and that has to be approved by the district attorney's office as to when that might be able to be released. Sometimes we're able to release dash cam video of incidents almost immediately. A lot of it has to do really with personal privacy, because sometimes you may be inside someone's residence, and the video may not be something that is appropriate to release to the community. But there are ways to do it. You can do it through a public records request, or you know, Freedom of Information Act, and request information that way. So it is absolutely possible, and we do try to release video when we can, when we have video that's actually something we can release and that's worthwhile releasing. So it is a little more complex than just being able to turn it over just because of a lot of the legal procedures that we have to follow.
Yeah, and if I could address, I think the chief has talked about a couple of times in regards to the budget issue. So our dash cameras are going towards the end of their lifecycle. And I know in the 2021-2022 budget, initially, that's where they were slated to be a part of. And part of the additional expense is actually having the support staff to be able to manage all of those videos. And with the levy, we did get some additional support staff, and so the cost is actually a little bit less. And I believe that this is something that we're going to look at and we're going to see, because it's something that, you know, the community is speaking about, that we want to see how quickly we can get it into action. But it is worth noting, we do have officers who are already wearing body cameras. Our canine officers, our traffic officers, and our school resource officers have body cameras. And so it's just replacing more of our patrol from the dash cam to the body cam.
Correct. And the other, was it, are they always required to be on? The answer is no, they're not required to be on all the time. The amount of data that that would take is immense. So when they're encountering people in the community, when there's, in a, some sort of a contact that's likely to be something that we would want to have on video, then yes, they're required to have it on. But if they go to, let's say they go to their lunch break or something like that, that's not a, that's not a time when we would expect the officers to have it on. But if an incident arises, they would turn it on. Same with the dash cam videos. And then it also, it has like a memory in there that has like a pre-record that we can set. And so it pre-records, when you turn it on, it actually, you see time before it's turned on. So depends on which system it is, based on the amount of time. And then certain systems, you have the ability to set that as well. So those are all things that would be obviously considered as we move forward, so.
Okay, another question. How does the police department fit into our local government structure? Well, the police department is a department of the city. We have seven, I believe, departments, and the police department is one, and it's budgeted four separately. And as I mentioned earlier, the police chief is the head of that department and reports directly to the city manager. So that's a quick way of explaining how that fits into our governmental structure. Another question. Could you explain what the Memphis Model for Crisis Intervention and De-escalating Training is?
Yeah, happily. So the Memphis Model is the, is the model that we, that we, law enforcement in Washington County and I think all of Clackamas County as well, we use for training our officers for dealing with folks that are in mental health crisis and getting them the appropriate level of care, helping to de-escalate the situation. So the Memphis Model, the reason it's called the Memphis Model is it was developed by the University of Memphis. And then it was implemented initially with the Memphis Police Department in Memphis, Tennessee. So it is scientific, scientifically based. It's the only, it's the only training for law enforcement that is endorsed by NAMI.
And that's the National Association of Mental Health, Mental?
Illness.
Yeah, illness.
Yes, and so which is, which is, that's important to have that endorsement. And when I went through the program, they actually had people from the NAMI organization there that helped with the instruction and with the facilitation of the class. So it isn't done by police officers, it's done by mental health professionals. There are some police officers that do some instruction in it, but it's done by mental health professionals, people who've experienced mental health crisis, people who have had successes and challenges in the, in the mental health arena in terms of getting the healthcare that they need. So it's a very, it's a very good, very robust program that is actually run by Washington County's Health Department, their behavioral health department is, or yes, it's not the department, the behavioral health section of the county health department is who actually helps to organize it with, in conjunction with the law enforcement agencies in the county.
Great. Okay, then I'm going to jump down. Commander McDonald, how are the officers and staff at the police department holding up? Could you provide some insight into the current climate of the department? I know this has been a tough few weeks for everyone.
Yeah, that's, that's an excellent question, and thank you for asking it, James. It, the, you know, everybody is, is, you know, concerned about the same things that our community is. The, when you talk about what happened to George Floyd in Minneapolis, there is no explanation. People have asked me many times, you know, "Do you teach that maneuver?" And the answer is no. That's, I don't even know what that was, that he did. It's certainly nothing that is ever, that I've ever seen trained in law enforcement. So as police officers, we actually have questions too. It's like, some of the officers have asked me, "How could something like that happen?" Because they just don't understand how, one, that an officer could have that much indifference for human life, and two, why the other officers may not have stepped in. And I think part of that goes to the culture of our organization in that it not only is an expectation, but it's a requirement. If an officer observed another officer doing something that was inappropriate, they're required to step in. And so it is, it is hard times. But the, you know, our officers are resilient, and I will say this. Our community here in Tiger is very appreciative of the work that the men and women do here. And they've, they have, they've expressed that. You know, obviously, a lot of questions that people want answered, and that's what we're here to do, is to answer those questions. And, but at the same time, people are very appreciative of the police department here in Tiger. So our men and women are doing well. They're, they're, they're holding up, and they're asking a lot of the same questions that the community is, and that's good. That's what we need to be doing, so.
I'm going to jump down, and then we'll jump back up. One question here, and maybe Councilor Lou is the council liaison to the library board. So any idea what the library reopening plan is?
Yes, we actually just had our first library board committee meeting last night, and it was great to see everyone's faces and to sort of understand what the plan is. And so there's some really good news is that we have staff that's currently in the building. So yesterday, for the first time, they actually started to try to call some of our residents who had books on hold, and they set up hold appointments. And so patrons were able to come by and pick up their hold and move along. And so it went really well, and they learned a little on the fly to figure it out. And so what they're going to be doing is they're going to work through the hold backlog. And once they work through that, is people are actually going to be able to start putting new items on hold and to be able to pick them up that way. In regards to specifically opening the building, they're still working on that as far as the details are concerned, because I think that's something that's going to be more along in the Phase Two section, which, as we learned earlier, has been pushed off until early to mid-July at the earliest opening. But staff is excited to really get it going, and they're doing some really great brainstorming on ways that they can continue to provide services, you know, that require, that they, are difficult to do now. And one of the examples that our library director was talking about is our printing services. Just for example, is there a way that somebody could send something to the library to print it and then be able to pick it up through the hold process? Because there's a lot of services that our community uses on top of just being able to get the books, and how do we continue to provide those? So plans are in place, and we're starting to figure out ways to get books out to people, because those who have items on the hold list, you've been waiting for months for those. And I can promise you, our librarians are rearing to go, and they just, they can't wait to get those books in your hands.
Kent, if you could back up to a question. There was a question about how people in the community can provide input to changes in police, I think Connie, yeah. Will the community have an opportunity to give input as changes are made to the police department? And the reason I wanted to bring this up is, this is really important to the council and to our police department. We want to hear from you. All of our phone numbers, all the council's phone numbers, emails are on the city council webpage. I mean, give us a call. We're looking for ways to be in touch with you about your concerns and the things we want to do moving forward. We're capturing some of the general topics, as we talked about earlier, body cams, SROs, some of the general topics that are coming up. We also want to try to do some in-person outreach, socially distant, maybe in our parks, outside. So we're interested in hearing from you, definitely, we are. I know the mayor and the city manager are working on a plan that I think we're going to see, Kent can nod for me on the 23rd, maybe? Yeah, about how we're going to start doing some outreach, and so please stay tuned. But if you have a thought, please email us, call us. We are listening, we want to hear from you, and we are going to take on the broad topics that we hear from the public about and try to work together as a community to come up with the solutions to those. So I wanted to hit that.
Yeah, if we could actually also hit, just as a segue, so it's, in Oregon, it's budget season. And so our budget starts on July 1st, and we're required to have a budget ready to go, approved and packaged on June 30th. And one of the things that is really important to us as a council is these are some really big conversations that we're having about our community. You know, a lot of quality of life issues, like homelessness, mental illness, drugs, vandalism. What do we want that to look like as far as our community and our policing structure? And these are big fundamental changes, and they're not, they're something that we take very seriously. And we want the community involved with lots of input and lots of decision-making and discussion and topics about it, because this has the potential to be a fundamental shift. So there's a lot of questions as far as, can I still give input on the budget? Yes, absolutely. We're looking to approve the budget on Tuesday. But you know, we have to have a budget passed by June 30th. And as a council, we are committed to, and we talked about this on our meeting on Tuesday, we're committed to having quarterly meetings with our budget committee to really dig in and make big changes if necessary, to reflect what our community wants and the conversations that we're having. It's important to me as a councilor that we are really looking through everything policy-wise and making sure that we're making really good, sound decisions and not immediate reactions, because we need to make sure that we're getting enough community input and the decisions that we're making are right and they're lasting and long-term. So we hear you, we're listening to you. We certainly want you to continue to give us input. So please don't look at us passing a budget as is on Tuesday as some sort of defeat or the council not taking you seriously that you want changes in the community. We're hearing you, we understand, and we're going to work through that as quickly as possible with the COVID situation just to make sure we're making good, solid decisions for our community.
Yeah, and I'd like to echo that too. This is going to be a different year with the budget. I imagine we'll be making changes. We don't always assume that, but we've all committed to a half-day session in October to review where we are with COVID, with these changes we want to make around racial justice and the economic situation we may be in, where we are then. So this is going to be a different year, but to echo what Councilor Lou said, passage of the budget on the 23rd is because we have to have something by July 1st, and we are committed to an ongoing conversation and making changes prudently and quickly as we can to address the issues that we're facing right now. Another question. Can we develop a citizen review panel for police conduct? I think the chief has addressed this in, when she met with the mayor, the last chat they had. And that's something we're open to considering, and that's another big topic that has come up as we've been listening to this. We'd like to hear from the community about that. What does that look like? What's the interest there? And so, yeah, we're open to discussions on that, and we can see where that goes. So if you're interested in that, you might want to let us know by emailing us, because we'd like to do more outreach on that.
And you can email the entire council at once, and we will have that information dropped into the chat box, so you know how to easily reach us. And it can be about any topic. It doesn't just have to be about the citizen review panel specifically. If there's something on your mind or there's a concern, we want to hear from you.
I'm going to drop down to this question about SROs and ask, there's quite a few questions in here, but if TTSD decides not to have SROs and/or the department isn't able to hire, recruit the extra officers per the levy that passed, how will it be decided what occurs with those funds? Does it get reallocated to other departments in city of Tiger or stay with the PD? And could those funds be used to update dash cams or get body cams? Who decides? Well, I'll do a really quick summary. That levy, when it was approved, was approved for specific purposes. And so the way a levy like that works, a five-year levy, the money that's in there is dedicated for an SRO, the aid officers and the training and the supplemental staff. However, we're hearing a lot from the community about SROs, and it may be that we do, what we do is, the school resource officers moving forward look different than they do now. So that's the conversation we need to have, is what do we do moving forward with that? As some of you may know, our high school students submitted a petition with 538 names on it.
It was a lot.
A lot, a lot for our high schoolers to read on something.
Of students that supported our school resource officer, Brian Imus, who was at the end of his four-year tour on that assignment. And so we'll be talking to the community about what the students and the parents and the district and the community finds valuable in that resource, we'll call it that, and what things might, we might want to look at changing moving forward. So I don't know if Commander McDonald has some comments on that.
Yeah, I mean, you hit the biggest things that, about where the money has to go and what the requirements are. And actually, the two of you would probably know better what the requirements are around that than I would. It was interesting with Officer Imus, the support that he had as he reached the end of, his end of his time at the high school about how all, and this was before the whole pandemic kicked off, the students really rallied around him, wanting to keep him in that assignment. And so it does show that there are, there are some students that see that value in the SRO program. I myself was an SRO a long time ago. And it was, quite frankly, the most rewarding assignment I've had in my career. And, you know, I think the largest part of it was the, just the fact that schools themselves are inherently positive and the collaboration and the work with school staff to come up with better solutions for kids when they, when they find themselves struggling and try and do something different than, than the legal system for them when it's appropriate. And more often than not, that's the case. And when you get a bunch of professionals together that have ideas and solutions, that's what we do. And so there's a lot of value in that collaboration that the officers have with the school. have with the school staff and, and that was clear with Officer Imus at the high school because of the, the fact that the students were so supportive of, of the work that he did there, so.
So that's a community conversation we're going to be having about what we do going forward. And so I think that's going to be included in the information that we're, the council's going to be reviewing on the 23rd about some of these major topics that we're going to be looking at going forward. I don't know if Council Lou wants to add anything.
Yeah, I would just add some more budget-specific information. Government, I'm, I'm an accountant. Government accounting is a very specific kind of accounting and it has very specific kinds of buckets of money. When you look at the city budget, it can look large overall, but we have very specific budgets that are dedicated to certain things like our street maintenance fee. It has very specific things that it can be paid for and it's the same with our levy. In fact, just last week, we recommended that we create a brand-new fund for our levies specifically so we can ensure and actually hold us accountable and be transparent with the community exactly the way that your money is being spent. And I just have to say personally, as a citizen, if there's a levy on the ballot that I vote for, I find a lot of comfort in the fact that what I vote for is exactly where the money is going to be spent and you're not going to be able to pull that money from that resource to put it into other places. The most flexible pot of money is the general fund and there's a lot of competition for those dollars. So, and, and you want to just make sure with that levy that that's where those funds are. And so while it can be frustrating in this circumstance that we can't just reallocate it, I think in the broader sense, it's a really great, responsible way to be able to manage and handle those levy funds, just from an accountability perspective.
Okay, another question, what are you doing to diversify the workforce in the City of Tiger? Well, that's an interesting question too. We're working on our updated strategic plan and one of the goals, goal number three, talks a lot about changes we're making in terms of trying to move toward a workforce that reflects the community that we live in. And so hiring, how we do outreach, how we retain folks, I can't think of all the details now, maybe Council Lou can think of some, but that's just been developed and it's out there for you to look at and review under our new strategic plan. And so we are making a commitment to do some things to, to do, to do more to make sure we have a diversified workforce. Have any comments on that?
Yeah, no, I, I would just add that I think, you know, the mayor kind of spoke to it last time. We're, we're in a, a period of really reevaluating a lot of racial issues and social justice and it's not as simple as just policing services. It's an overall look at the community and the way that we support everyone in the community. And so I think it's time for us to take a really good look at a lot of different broad programs. This includes things like education and, and housing and food security and all of these sorts of things that work together in order to make Tiger the kind of place that's welcome for everyone and that people can live if they want to live here. And so it's a situation in which I think we, we need to work on the community in general just to make sure we're meeting all of those in order to also attract talent, talented individuals to come work at the city.
So again, the, the lens that we look through in providing all of our services, because we're in the service business, we're, we really want to make a concerted effort to be looking at that through a lens of equity to serve everybody in our community. So are school resource officers armed? What are the primary responsibilities of an SRO?
That would be a great question for you, Commander McDonald.
So yes.
Direct it to you.
Yeah, yes. School resource officers are armed, they're, they wear a uniform or something similar to what I wear. And then primary responsibility for the SROs is, one, is school safety, but then really it's that relationship building with the staff, the students, the, the parents in that, in that particular school community. And, and then they also are responsible for a lot of the child welfare cases or the, the child abuse cases that come in. That's just the structure that we have there in charge of the, they're the primary investigators for those types of cases that come in and they work on those in conjunction with Department of Human Services and the child welfare caseworkers there. So I guess there are several primary responsibilities for SROs. They have a, they have a wide variety of things that, that they're responsible for. And so I guess that's a, that's a little summary of, of what they do.
I remember when the present, when the petition was presented to us, one student comment was Officer Imus is the only adult I feel comfortable talking to. And that was heartbreaking for that one student, but to me, I thought, wow, if that's a student who is, you know, going through some tough times and has found somebody that was, happened to be a female she could connect to, then I thought, you know, that was, that was important.
Yeah.
How will the changes to the transit police affect those Tiger officers who are currently assigned to transit? Officer Mc, or Commander McDonald?
Excellent question. So the, the, the current agreement with Trimet actually runs through the end of this calendar year and there are a variety of changes, which I won't pretend to know where it's at at this current moment because things are very fluid between Trimet and specifically Portland and Multnomah County Sheriff's Office. So currently, they're, they're still assigned at, at the transit police and so right now I don't, we don't, we don't know if there will be any changes to that current agreement. So we'll, we'll know that probably if there will be over the next few months.
Thank you. Some citizens who are listening in clearly want racial issues discussed. What forum will those discussions take place in? I admire our police officers and city leaders, but these concerned citizens need a forum to be heard. What is that forum? And you are absolutely right. We are seriously interested in hearing from those folks. We've been talking about a number of different ideas, reaching out to that community and I know the mayor's working again, I'm repeating myself with the city manager on that. We're trying to find a number of different ways in this COVID challenge we're in to hear from those folks. And so some people have reached out to us directly and said that they would be interested in communicating with us. We are doing things like this. I made calls on the police levy to get people, encourage people to vote and I left my number on 2100 voicemails of 2100 people I talked to. So we want to hear from you and if you're interested, we also want to know ways you'd be comfortable communicating with us. If you want to have a one-on-one conversation or be part of a group, you'd rather correspond via email, that's the other thing we're interested in is we don't want to prescribe necessarily the forum. We are happy to offer some forums that we think might be workable, but if you have thoughts or ideas, that's another thing that we're very interested in hearing back on. So, Council Lou?
And I spoke with the mayor briefly today, actually just regarding this issue because I know it's something that we've been talking about what feels like for several weeks and we continue to talk about it and it feels like where is the action? It's difficult for a couple of different things with the COVID situation. It's much harder to sort of manage what, where we can meet, what that looks like, how many people can be there. And we're looking, which I think is really important, at a third-party facilitator. It's important that this is coming from a neutral party who is actually going to be part of the discussion on how this forum takes place. Because I think the city is certainly not in the best aspect to set what the forum looks like or the template or the questions. And so it's important to have a, a third-party who really has an expertise in, in moderating and being sort of a neutral piece to have that. So please know we are taking it very seriously and we really want to make it happen. We just want to do it in the best way possible and we will communicate with you in many, as many different ways as we can how that happens. And I hope there's a couple of different ways that it happens. But as Council Newton says, if you feel more comfortable emailing us or calling us on the phone, please let us know and we're happy to set up those communications or those calls as well.
Okay, thank you all for your insights and for taking the time to chat with residents. We love doing it, so thank you for making that comment. Police are vital to communities as is diversity. What programs do you have in place to address residents of color who may now have a fear of Tiger police and vice versa? What training do the police undertake to understand that fear? Commander McDonald, do you have thoughts on that?
Yeah, I can, I can give some insight into that. So we, as an agency, we reach out to our diverse communities and we try to engage, engage those communities and have conversations with them in a, in a neutral environment so that we can get to know each other and we can get to know and understand our needs, the fears that, that communities have because the, the reality is, is that there are different communities that, that have been impacted differently by law enforcement over time. And so it's important that we as police officers understand that. You know, as a part of our training, you know, we, we work towards getting people in the department trained in trauma-informed care so they understand what some of the, some of the past lived experiences that people have had regardless of where, where they come from or what their, what their background is. But in our diverse communities, it's important that we as police officers understand that there is, that there's history there and that there's, that there has been, that, that people have faced challenges in their lives with law enforcement and it's important for us, for our officers to understand that and, and be, be empathetic when, when they're working with people that have had those challenges in their lives. And so we really focus on trying to make sure that our officers have those tools before they have to work with somebody in a, I guess for lack of a better word, an enforcement situation, trying to do it in that neutral situation. It's all part of that community policing that we talked about earlier. It's the, it's the building relationships with the communities and it's building relationships with, with all the diverse communities within Tiger and, and the areas that, that touch Tiger as well. Because, you know, there's a lot of people that move around from, from one city to the next and understanding those, those, those other diverse communities is very important for us so that when we do go into a situation where we are in there in a police role where we have to be in there because there's some sort of an emergency or call for service, we have a little better perspective as to what they might be viewing it as. And so that we can have a, a calculated response that may be different than a different community that we're working with. So we work very hard at that to try and, and, and understand those so that, that we can be prepared and that the community can be prepared as well so that hopefully we can help to break down some of those barriers and understand each other. And, you know, the, the last thing that we want as law enforcement is people to be fearful of us. And we recognize that there are valid reasons for people to be fearful of law enforcement and, and it's our job to work on trying to, to break down those barriers and, and improve that relationship.
Great, okay. How is the police department helping children not be so afraid of officers?
Well, very much in a similar way. Some of the, some of the best examples I can give, I can use a personal example, is last summer, we would go with the, with our parks staff to pop up in the park and we would interact with, with children. And, you know, I got, I was blowing bubbles with some kids, I was playing, I think it's slam, slam ball with some other kids and being able to, you know, get to know children in, and get down on their level, get to know them in, in an environment that is again neutral or maybe fun and then build that level of trust so that, that children can feel empowered to come and talk to a police officer or say hello or in non-COVID times, a high five, you know, things like that. So we try to, we try to develop those relationships and, and try not to be the big imposing figure. It's really important for, for children to get down on their level, you know, get, get down and, you know, squat down or kneel down and, and talk to them at their level and then it isn't this big scary figure that's there. You can get down and, and be a little more personal with them.
And if you missed it, Commander McDonald read a story to our younger residents the other day and it was blind dogs don't play catch.
Yeah, they, blind, blind dogs don't fetch, right. And I do have.
I watched it, it was very cute and Commander McDonald in fact has a blind dog.
I do, yeah.
So our officers are doing that and so that's kind of another fun thing.
Our next question actually was going to tie into something that I was going to talk to you about, which was the police open house that we had last year, which I thought was another really great example to provide kids the opportunity to sort of learn more about the police department and really give, see some vehicles up close and really interact with officers. And, but we have a question as far as when the open house last year, watching kids play in the urban armored vehicle scared me and made me sad and angry, what would it be used for here in Tiger?
Okay, and actually that, that piece of equipment is, is not owned by the city. It's, it's owned by the sheriff's office actually and it's part of a cooperative team that we participate on. And so it would be used for a critical incident that we would call the tactical team, like a SWAT team out and it could be used for something like that. So we brought it specifically to be able to share with community members to show what some of the resources that the city doesn't have to purchase or provide that is a, that's a, a piece of equipment that we can use with, you know, our partnership with other agencies. And quite frankly, we only have one person as a member of that team. So if we needed to bring that team in for a critical incident that our patrol officers aren't specifically trained to do, it would be agencies from around the county that would be sending their staff to help us with that and that piece of equipment could be something we would use.
But we haven't had a need for that.
No, it's very, I don't, gosh, it's been a long time since we brought that out to Tiger. I, I mean, off the top of my head, I can't think of it, but it's, it's very rare that, it doesn't get used very much county-wide, so.
Okay, Kent is moving the thing back. I was going to ask the next question, but is the city open to a volunteer community resource program, not the volunteer police, but rather community counselors that live in Tiger and can support our officers in non-violent situation? Well, I would say, I mean, I know we've had, we have a chaplain and I know that as we're having these community discussions, we will be looking at a lot of different things, what the community would like to see, changes they would like to see, what support our officers might need as we make these changes. So I think that's something, you know, as we're working through, quite frankly, I think a lot of things are on the table. So I don't know that we'd be closed to that idea, but that's something I think we would look at in terms of the full, full range of how are we providing services? And if we're going to provide these services, what support does the community need and what support do our officers need? So any comments other than that?
No.
Okay. What about hosting a forum in Spanish for our Latinx community? And that's a really good point. I think it's important that you realize as we look at, Council Lou made a good point a few minutes ago about looking at all of our services and how we're providing services equitably across the board. And I think you'll see as we move through in both our priority three of our strategic plan update, we'll be looking at how we're providing the full range of services to Latinx, Black, you know, people that are hunger, you know, hunger, what do they call it? Challenge, that's not the right word, but senior citizens, the disabled. So we will be looking at the full range of our, of our services and how, how we provide those. And so a forum as we move forward in Spanish for our Latinx community around service provision, I think would be a good idea.
Yeah, and I, you know, talking about our strategic plan, it's something, just making sure that we're continuing to try to reach our community in whatever way possible. And so I think just continuing to broaden the, the languages that we offer in is, would be a great continual step because there are other speakers here as their, their native language. And so we just, we want to make sure that we're serving all of our community members. And so that's a really great suggestion and I'm sure it's something that is one of the options that we'll have for sure because it's an important community that we need to speak with.
And we are doing more in terms of providing Spanish-language information. Are statistics available to show police interactions by ethnicity over the years?
Yes, to a degree. It depends on, it would depend specifically on what, what it is that you're looking for. So the, like for traffic stops and things like that, 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 that data is, is being kept. It's actually law here in Oregon. And it's, it's been a phased-in approach over a number of years, but we've, Tiger started participating, I believe it was July 1st of last year is when we started reporting the data specifically for traffic stops. And then we do, we do keep that also for like if force is used in an interaction, so that, that data is also kept, so.
And I believe that's on our website, on the page, there's some information about.
Yes, there's some on the.
For community, for all page, yeah.
Yeah, the first response data I think is, is, is there in terms of the total numbers and things like that. But yes, we do, that's part of the tracking that we use, that, that we keep, that we keep track of within the police department. And then a, a lot of the other, like calls for service that just, that, that are generated by the community. And then, uh, a, a lot of the other, um, like calls for service that just, that, that are generated by the community, it's, it would be more difficult to, to do that because we don't always, um, because we don't, we don't always have that data. We don't, we don't, uh, track that. Especially if it's, if it's community-generated, it's, it isn't generally, uh, something that we have, that we have the ability to track. But there are a variety of areas we can, yes, and we do.
How often are students being cited, charged or arrested in schools by SROs? Our students need to get through high school without criminal records. In my high school, the SRO was a disciplinary tool.
Um, so it, it doesn't happen all that often. I don't have the specific statistics off the top of my head. In fact, one of the primary, uh, reasons that they have that, that they have the collaboration between the, the SRO and the, um, the, uh, school staff is to really try and come up with an alternative solution. And using the criminal justice system really as the, the last, uh, the last resort. But trying to come up with something else is what, that's what we really try and do. Um, in terms of being a disciplinary tool, if it's a school discipline issue, uh, our SROs are not allowed to participate in a school discipline issue unless it becomes criminal in nature. Or somebody is, uh, if it became a, a safety issue, then they would get involved. But if it has your average run-of-the-mill, uh, school discipline issue, it's not a, uh, it's not something that the SRO is, is going to be used for. That's what school staff is responsible for doing. And, and, uh, if it, if it has to do with school rules, it is, it's really a, um, it's something that the school focuses on.
One more question. Where are we at in the process of establishing a police oversight committee? We talked about that a minute ago, and I know that's something that, um, has come up. Uh, several people have commented on that. And so we are looking at, um, if we had one, what would it look like? How would that move forward? So that's something that we're, you know, we're, we're going to be talking about as we move forward in changes that we might be making in our police services area. Any comments? Escalation is the biggest concern right now. It doesn't seem to take, take much to ignite po, police officers? Question mark. Tigard community policing is good. I'm concerned how exhausted are they?
Um, you know, I, I think that, uh, in terms of, of our staff, the, you know, the current climate is, is challenging for sure. Um, but we have, we have those open conversations in, in the police department. You know, as best we can in the current pandemic climate, too. So the, the thing that we're trying to do is making sure that we're, that we're keeping track of, of how they're feeling and, and making sure that they have the ability to take a deep breath whenever they can, uh, which really isn't a whole lot different than, than how we've operated before these times. It's, it's important that officers remember that, that, uh, that they need to be able to remain calm with the community. And yes, these are stressful times for sure. Um, but, uh, like I said earlier, one of the things that we've noticed is that there are a lot of community members that have sent in thank you notes um, and, and say hello to our officers out on the street. They wave and say thank you. And it really is a, it really is refreshing to, to be able to see and hear their, um, uh, their, you know, the community's thanks. And that really goes a long way for helping our officers in. And so that really makes a, that makes a big difference.
And I want to thank the community for supporting our officers with the approval of the levy. And I can't tell you how many officers the council heard from that were so appreciative, uh, from the community and for the council to, uh, putting that levy forward. So, you know, thank you very much Tigard community for supporting our police officers and our police services. Because I think, you know, in the pandemic, pre-everything else that's going on, you know, that meant a lot to our officers too, to feel supported by the community. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you very much, yes.
Okay, we need programs to help with masks. They're hard to find. When some are available, they're, they are expensive. And as Counselor Lou mentioned, we're going to be wearing masks indoors. So I got to get on line and find some more too. So we'll get out the sewing machine.
Yeah, I actually put one in. Uh, my husband and I put some in each of our cars just to make sure that we have them because we've left and forgotten them and had to go back home. So, um, we bought some extras.
Right. So I think what I'll do is ask, um, we have our communication manager, communications manager Kent Wyatt over there running the show for us. And I'll, I'll ask him to look in to see if he has, if, if the city can put something on our COVID page about where, where there might be some, um, resources. So, okay, we have five minutes left. What were the original plans for the money from the passage of thirty-four-two-ninety-five? And how have they changed in light of current events? Well, as Counselor Lou mentioned, because it's a levy for specific services, they haven't changed. We're still looking at funding the eight patrol officers, a school resource officer, and the training, which I think is great. Um, I, I was really, you know, most enthused about that. And then the support services in order to, um, move forward. Again, as we mentioned, what that school resource officer looks like may change in our community discussions. But we don't have, um, the ability to make dramatic changes in what the levy will fund. And in people, a lot of the people I talked to, as Counselor Lou mentioned, were appreciative that they knew where their money was going. So I don't know if you have a follow-up on that.
Yeah, no, I mean, just to continue to say, government accounting, um, is a specific type, type of fund accounting. And the levy is very, very specific. And, um, we are actually creating its own, um, fund within our accounting system to, um, designate and make sure to track and hold us accountable that those funds are only being used for exactly what the citizens approved it for.
Does Tigard police have asset forfeiture programs and laws?
I'm guessing you want me to take this one?
I do. I know we have a program.
So, uh, so yes, so asset forfeiture, uh, programs, I, it really, it, it, uh, it boils down to, uh, where the, where asset forfeiture money can come from. So it could come from a state asset forfeiture, federal asset forfeiture. Very rare that we ever see anything in a state asset forfeiture just because of the way the state laws are set up. We do, um, we do see some money from the federal asset forfeiture. Um, and that has to do with investigations where we partner with the federal government on investigations. And we're talking large, uh, large investigations. Typically, um, uh, like cartel-level drug investigations where we might be involved with. And so we could see some money from that. And the money is very tightly regulated on what it can be spent on. Um, and it's, it's all, uh, there's a very tight audit process that the, that the Department of Justice has in place in terms of how that money can be spent. So, so yes, we do get some asset forfeiture money. And then the laws are very much, uh, they're very heavily regulated as to, as to how that money can be used and what it can be used for.
That's right. How are Tigard police trained and what fear means? Many of the eight can't wait and OAA policies use imminent threat and officer perception as guidelines for reasons to use force. Is there education on how their gear governmental affiliation protects them beyond what they may consider a threat in their everyday life? How does our police force plan to address the bar of fear? And Commander McDonald, if you have a.
Um, yeah, so I'm gonna, I'm, I'm gonna speculate a little bit here in terms of what, uh, in what, uh, context the question is in terms of what fear means. So I'll, I'll just hit a little bit, uh, on our training. So our officers, we, we train, uh, a variety of different disciplines, not the least of which is scenario-based training, which puts the officers into a position where we can train some of the de-escalation that we talked about earlier. But then also put them into realistic scenarios that, uh, that would talk about things like imminent threat. And, um, and then we train to make sure that the officers understand what their, um, what they can do based on the law. But then also what they should be doing based on whatever the situation is, whatever the, uh, whatever the circumstances of that issue are. I hope I'm answering this question correctly because, uh, um, I'm not sure what, uh, exactly the, the question is, trained in what fear means.
Well, and I think they're also talking about, you know, imminent threat and officer perception. There seems to be a little bit of an issue around, are they protected differently? Because they're, they've got their police gear and they're, they're a police officer. So they may consider a threat differently than they would in their everyday life. But it sounds like.
Okay, yes.
Scenario training.
And, and yes, so, uh, it, so it could be that, uh, that they would look at it, uh, slightly differently than they would in their, in their everyday life. There are some, uh, some laws out there, but imminent threat, uh, it would be, there would be, need to be more to it. If it's just an imminent threat, it needs to be what type of threat that is before that's going to identify what level of force they may or may not be able to use.
Okay, thank you. We just have a couple of minutes left, so we'll go to closing comments. So Counselor Lou.
Yeah, I, so a lot of these questions, um, and things like, um, our, um, eight can't wait, how we stack up are under our community for all page on our website. Please make sure to look at that. Um, there's lots of good information on there and it's going to be updated with more questions that we answered for tonight. And contin, it's continuously updated with additional questions. Um, I also want to add on Saturday, um, Cook Park is going to be closed, um, from noon until seven PM for Tigard High School's drive-through graduation. It's going to be really great weather, but please know if you go there, you will be asked to leave. Um, so we can honor our high school students who are graduating. So, um, please steer clear of the area just on Saturday, but you can go back on Sunday.
Thank you. And I'll just wrap up and say thank you for taking the time to tune in this evening. We, we do want to hear from you. As Counselor Lou mentioned, we are listening. We want to know what your concerns are. We're, we're, we're going to be talking on, um, Tuesday night about a plan moving forward to, to engage the community more fully. We're hearing from a lot of you, um, via email. And please keep commenting. Uh, we're going to continue to do the mayor's fireside chats and the spark through the year till the end of the year. And, uh, stay tuned for changes that we make in our budget as we determine what changes we want to fund and, and how we move forward in this community, community conversation. So thanks again for all you're doing to let us know what your thoughts are. And, um, please keep, uh, in touch and, and keep letting us know what you think.
Yeah, and thank you for being here with us tonight. We really appreciate you taking the time to be involved in your community and to give back. And I also especially want to thank Commander McDonald for his time to be here. Um, you answered a lot of really great questions and you're an incredibly thoughtful officer and we're lucky to have you on our staff.
Thank you, my pleasure. Yeah.
Yep, have a great night. Thanks Tigard.
Night Tigard.